Good afternoon, you are.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's two oh three P. M. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Fornier is excused. He's representing the county in Buquota for the event related to naming, I think it's the post office being named for the deceased mayor Gordon of Buquota. And so we thank Commissioner Fornier for representing us down there. Commissioner Mejia to my right, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioner Emily Klaus to my left, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Jennifer Walker. So we do have a quick advisement. We're not live streaming today. We're recording it and posting it. We're dealing with a couple of technical issues with our livestream, which may be the next week or so, week or two, several weeks, maybe three weeks. Okay, so meetings will be available, but a little bit on delay, recording and posting rather than through a livestream. Okay, so calling the meeting in order, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by District One Commissioner Mejia.
If you'll please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'm also going to ask Commissioner Mejia to do our land acknowledgement today.
Thank you. We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and steward at the lands and waterways of this county with great care and who continue as sovereign nations today, specifically the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Next is a approval of agenda, and this morning we had a request from Commissioner Klaus to move Consent Item Five to Department Item Nine. Can I get a motion to make that amendment to the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda by moving Consent Item Five to Department Item Nine. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on that? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have an amended motion. Is there a motion to approve that amended agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. That motion carries, and the agenda is approved. Okay, next up is presentations. We have three consent proclamations this afternoon. I'm going to pass it on to Ellen Massey to walk us through those.
Thanks so much, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Ellen Massey, Management Analyst and Central Services. Like the Chair said, we have three consent proclamations today, and our first one is the Purple Heart Day, and we will have Mr. Allen Acosta from the Military Order of the Purple Heart to speak.
First of all, I just, first of all, I would just want to say thank you to the folks here today for honoring our combat wounded and also the Board of Commissioners and the residents of Thurston County. Today is another proud and solemn moment for the Military Order of Purple Heart of Washington and Thurston County, coming together unwavering courage in service of the men and women of the armed forces, especially those that have been wounded or made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of this country. As we officially honor our combat wounded and veterans in our community, this proclamation by the Board of County Commissioners representing Thurston County residents, we do so with great humility and gratitude in honor of our local veterans and their sacrifice. Thurston County has continued to lead the way in support of our veterans community, especially in two thousand and seventeen when the county proclaimed as a Purple Heart County. Thurston County has been steadfast and loyal in supporting not only our veterans, but our active duty forces and families that timely call Thurston County their homes. As most of us here understand the difficulties of military families encounter and their social relationships that are affected by constant moves, Thurston County has continued to provide our military family as much support as possible. And as they look back upon a career of service, Thurston County will be a positive time in their career. A proclamation today that honors our combat wounded is thus not honoring Purple Heart recipients, but the brave men and women who fought shoulder to shoulder with at that particular moment. As we always say, the medal is not just a representation of the person, but the brave heroes around us during that particular military action. This is why we survived. This is why we lived, and this is why we fought hard for each other. I am grateful and thankful to all and the residents of this county. On behalf of those I represent, I salute all of you for your dedication to us and keeping the promise and honoring and remembering. We honor our fallen by supporting the living veteran. Again, thank you to the Board of Commissioners and the residents of this county.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the National Wellness Month, and we have Ed Marson, Parks and Trail Operations Manager from Public Works to speak.
Good afternoon. Fix this guy here. Ed Marson, Parks and Trails Maintenance and Operations Manager. First and foremost, is this working? Yeah. Okay. Maybe my voice is louder than the speaker's own. First and foremost, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Board of County Commissioners and our entire community for acknowledging Public Works and our Parks and Trails program with this wonderful honor. It's truly a privilege for our team to serve our community and be recognized for the work that we do. But of course, this recognition isn't just about our staff. It's about the collective effort of so many people who make our parks and trails what they are. Our dedicated staff, volunteers, and community partners work tirelessly behind the scenes to keep our parks clean, safe, and accessible for us all. This recognition represents that collective effort. Now, why is all this work so important? Simply put, our parks, trails, and open spaces play a major role in supporting our overall wellness. Having access to clean, safe outdoor spaces encourages us all to stay active. Whether it's walking, running, cycling, or just enjoying a day at the park, physical activity in nature does wonders for our bodies. And the benefits go beyond just physical health. Spending time outdoors is a natural stress reliever. It lowers blood pressure, boosts mental well-being, and can even improve mood. We all know how important mental health is, and our parks provide a vital refuge for emotional well-being. Plus, they foster social connections, whether it's casual chat with a neighbor or gathering for a community event. It's these connections that are so important for a strong, healthy community. Speaking of community, I also want to highlight the role of equity and wellness. Parks and trails are free and accessible to everyone regardless of income or background. These spaces serve as equalizers, giving all residents the opportunity to experience the benefits of outdoor activity. No matter where you come from, you can walk, run, bike, or simply sit and enjoy nature at no cost. And that's something truly special. Beyond the benefits for us as individuals, parks and trails are crucial to the health of our environment, which in turn impacts our health. Green spaces improve air and water quality, which benefits our respiratory and cardiovascular health. Green spaces improve, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna read again. Trees help regulate temperature, providing us with much-needed shade during those thirteen scorching hot summer days that we get during the year. The health of our environment is directly tied to our own health, and the work we do to preserve and protect these spaces plays a critical role. I also want to emphasize the broader impact parks have on our community. Parks attract families, foster community pride, and support local events. They also play a role in education. Studies have shown that access to nature can improve concentration and learning outcomes for children, which is something that we can all feel proud of. Looking ahead, the Public Works Parks and Trails team remains fully committed to preserving, protecting, and improving our outdoor spaces for both the current and future generations. Our work is never done, but together with the continued support of our community, we can ensure that our parks continue to thrive. And finally, I want to invite you all to use your parks and trails regularly. They're here for you, and there's no better way to honor them than by getting out and enjoying everything that they have to offer. Once again, thank you for this honor and for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ed. And finally, we have the proclamation for Target Zero Awareness Month, and we have Tara here to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's nice to see you all. My name is Tara Zatlana, and I work at the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And as part of my role there, I serve as the Thurston County Target Zero Manager. I want to thank you for just the time that you're allowing us to come and talk to you today and for extending an invitation for me to give you a brief update on the state of traffic safety in Thurston County, and hopefully a little bit of time to highlight some of the good work happening as well. So you've heard from me a lot over the last few years, and it's usually pretty doom and gloom, to be honest. But in two thousand and twenty-four, we finally saw a little glimmer of hope. So after years of negative trends, we finally saw a ten percent decrease in traffic fatalities across the state. And after a record high of eight hundred and nine in two thousand and twenty-three, I'm happy to report that we saw an even more drastic decrease in Thurston County. We had a twenty-three percent drop in traffic fatalities last year, and preliminary data suggests that we're on track for even better outcomes in two thousand and twenty-five. So generally speaking, we're looking a little bit on the upside. But even though we're really happy about the trends that we're seeing, I think it's really important to still remember that we're in the middle of what is certainly classified as a public health and public safety crisis. Nearly last year, nearly half of all of the traffic fatalities in the state involved impairment, and about a third involved excessive speed. And Thurston County, unfortunately, those percentages were even higher, even more speeding and even more impairment here. But all of this really just means that our work is not done, and it really highlights the importance of all the collaborative efforts happening throughout our community. So I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about that and hopefully give a few shout-outs. So the Thurston County Target Zero Task Force meets monthly, and that's comprised of local and state partners. So at the state level, we work with Liquor and Cannabis Board. They do a lot of our outreach in real time with our patrols, and State Patrol is providing corridor coverage when we're doing city and county roads. And then locally, we work with Thurston County Sheriff's Office, Olympia Police Department, and we're really happy that this year, Lacey Police Department's been able to rejoin our task force after several years of just staffing numbers being so low that they just, it precluded them from being able to participate. And we're really seeing that trend across the state as staffing levels are starting to inch back to the law enforcement agencies, and agencies are able to either establish or reestablish their traffic units. And I think that's probably some of the impact we see in the lower numbers across the state. But together, these agencies have led nine coordinated, high-visibility enforcement patrols since our fiscal year started in October, and those efforts have resulted in twenty-three DUI arrests and around four hundred citations. I'll also highlight that the Sheriff's Office, as you may know, received a special grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to conduct dedicated DUI patrols throughout the summer. And those patrols have resulted in an additional eleven DUI arrests and one hundred and twenty-five tickets or warnings since they started just at the beginning of June. And those patrols are being conducted around what's traditionally been called the Hundred Deadliest Days between Memorial Day and Labor Day, when we see the most traffic fatalities on our roads. But we're working in Thurston County and across the state to really rebrand that as the Hundred Safe Days of Summer, because we believe that prevention can change, can change those trends we see. So in addition to enforcement patrols, we've also placed a strong emphasis on car seat safety. Through a lot of events that are coordinated through Safe Kids Thurston County, our child passenger safety lead organization, we've conducted car seat checks to ensure that kids are in the right size and type of seat that they need, those are installed properly, and that families who may not be able to afford a car seat are given access to one. And I'd like to also highlight that Thurston County Public Health also provides car seats through their nurse family partnership when families are in need. And so by coordinating with organizations that work with those communities, we're ensuring that every child in Thurston County has access to a properly fitting and correctly installed car seat. And finally, I'll highlight that the Thurston County Public Works Department recently developed a traffic safety action plan, which you may also be familiar with, but that was developed with direct input from the community, and it's grounded in the safe system approach, which basically just recognizes that humans make mistakes, and those mistakes should not cost people their lives. And it impacts the way we engineer safer roads, the way we educate the public, and the way we create reinforcing and redundant systems that protect and ultimately save lives. So to wrap it up, I'll just say that over the last year or so, we've seen the positive trends. We know our work isn't done, and today's proclamation just reaffirms our commitment to a data-informed approach that involves strategic enforcement, community outreach, and infrastructure improvements, and truly believe that as a community working together, we can move closer to our shared vision of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Just, that's really great to hear those statistics. You know, twenty-three percent is significant. So thank you for that. Thanks, Ed, for pointing out trees and parks, the value to our community. And Ellen, thank you so much. Good to see you again, and thanks for your powerful words and the colleagues that you brought to support the proclamation. We really appreciate you being here.
Sure. And are those all your colleagues? And, you know, if we can all rise so we can kind of see you, and thank you so much for your service.
Means a lot to have you guys here. Okay. Next up is public comment related to items on today's agenda. We will have a public comment period later in the agenda for any matter under the sun, but related to items on the agenda, I don't have anyone signed up that wanted to provide comment. Is this an item on the agenda? Okay, Ms. Reed.
Based on the agenda setting, anyway.
Ready?
Go ahead.
So many.
Why are you looking at, Madam Clerk?
Speaking of the moment you need to.
Was it public comment? All the public.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. And, okay, the matter, what we handled in the agenda, oh, yeah. Okay, you're correct. Let me go through the governing principles in case for all the public comment, and then we got your timer loaded. So hang on. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comment from the public at all meetings. There are guidelines governing such comment to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. Introduce yourself, an address, or area of the county in which you reside when called. State the agenda item you're speaking to. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Board does not respond directly to public comment, but the county manager may follow up with specific items as needed. Speakers have three minutes to address the board and cannot donate that time to any other speakers. Please be respectful. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. No electioneering comments or comments about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually become before the board on appeal. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter forty-two fifty-six of R C W. Thank you for your cooperation. And good to go, Madam Clerk? Okay, you're up, Ms. Reed.
All right. Sorry. I'm not doing well. But anyway, my name is Talana Reed, and I live in Thurston County, and I'm speaking to comments made by County Manager Hernandez earlier today. I'm deeply frustrated with County Manager Hernandez and other county officials for deflecting from the core issues I presented to this commission. As lead grantees for funding, the county is mandated to prevent fraud, waste, and abuse of taxpayer dollars. Yet, the O H H P program permitted contractors to build the county for hundreds of thousands of dollars in ineligible expenses. I am certain that rental assistance payments were directed to employees of the provider, and rental assistance were not made for tenants in need. Taxpayers supported a tax increase to address homelessness, yet the county authorized four hundred thousand dollars in advance payments for services that were never rendered, fully rendered. And the provider actually admitted that they did not allocate this money to the program. And despite this being reported through proper channels, there was no action taken to address this. They later attempted to cover up this by submitting receipts for fictitious expenditures. This misuse, other misuse includes taxpayer dollars covering health premiums for employees that were not, for people that were not employees, salaries for staff when their doors were shut, and employees receiving rental assistance payments as landlords when the files showed otherwise. The true victims are the single adults who were evicted due to their inability to access rental assistance. They're the only single adult provider in the county, as well as employees who feel helpless to report anything because nothing will be done or the consequences they'll face. County Manager Leonard claims that the state auditor found no fraud or misuse of funds. If the commissioners are certain that every dollar provided to this provider was spent legitimately, the state so clearly and publicly, and I won't waste my time coming here, speaking about it, if not, what specific actions are being done to address this misuse of funds, I challenge all of you and the manager to publicly share the audit and report that concrete evidence that this did not happen. This information I have presented to the commission is separate from any other cases going on. I've asked the commissioners to explain why their own policies aren't being followed and why taxpayer money is not being accounted for in accordance with state law and program policies. Thank you.
Anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up that had public comment on an agenda item? Okay, we'll have public comment, as I said, later in the agenda for general matters. Next up is county managers.
Thank you, Chair, and Commissioners. In response to the Partners in Prevention Education Pipe Program, it's a brief timeline. October two thousand and twenty-three, Public Health and Social Services staff began monitoring of the Pipe's eviction prevention rent assistance, or E P R A program. Staff found no evidence of intentional malfeasance, but identified concerns about pipe management practices, including the lack of internal controls and incomplete documentation of records. December of two thousand and twenty-three, after public health staff monitor and observed fiscal management concerns, fiscal manager and public health was requested to conduct a formal fiscal monitoring of the program. In February of two thousand and twenty-four, the Public Health Fiscal Manager issued a fiscal monitoring report, which included corrective action items. In August of two thousand and twenty-four, Pipe made a final payment on restoring funding identified by the Corrective Action Plan. On October two thousand and twenty-four, the State Auditor's Office issues a two thousand and twenty-three fiscal report, which includes a review of the Pipe E P R A invoices. No deficiencies of material weaknesses were identified. January through February two thousand and twenty-five, public health staff monitor Pipe structurally closely, and after trying to provide assistance, ultimately determined it would be best to terminate the contract. On April two thousand and twenty-five, after notifying the Board of County Commissioners, Pipe and Public Health mutually agreed to terminate the contract. And regarding employment matters and concerns brought up in public comment, we acknowledge that there's an ongoing legal proceeding and therefore will not be making any public comment at this time. And we appreciate the understanding and respect of legal process. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Klaus?
Can we ask questions of the county manager? Is now a good time?
Now's the time.
Okay. And I understand some questions may not be able to be answered in this current setting, but I would like to know, I know we have an upcoming executive session, so please just let me know if some of these questions are more appropriate for that time. So it's shared that the State Auditor's Office found no misuse of funds. Is there any chance that we will be able to see that audit? We as the board?
Yes.
Okay.
We can get you the report out, which is, you know, it's reported out through the auditor's office, but we can get you a copy of that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much. I also want to address, and Chair, stop me if I shouldn't go here, but I want to address the letter that Ms. Reed sent to the board, which requested that the county manager, and I assume the board, facilitate mediation between the parties involved. I don't know all the parties that are involved, but I don't think that that's a bad idea, considering the circumstances, if we're able to do that.
I would suggest, Commissioner Klaus, that we talk to our legal counsel.
Okay.
And maybe the executive session is the perfect place to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Klaus. Let's move on to the consent agenda. With the amendment made, we have eleven items. There are motions to approve the consent item.
To approve the consent agenda, one through eleven.
That's it.
Motion to approve consent items one through eleven, and executed non-deductible motion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Department Items Six, Central Services, property transfer of fifty-five oh one Southeast Thirty-second Court and fifty-five oh five Southeast Thirty-second Court to Holmes First.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Rick Thomas, the Capital Project Planning Manager. Ordinance Number sixteen five thirty-three, amended Thurston County Code chapter two point one zero four to regulate the disposition of public property for affordable housing in accordance with R C W thirty-nine thirty-three zero one five. The state law authorizes municipalities to transfer, lease, and dispose of surplus public property for the public benefit for the purpose of affordable housing for low-income and very low-income housing. The county owns property at fifty-five oh one and fifty-five oh five southeast. The county owns property at fifty-five oh one and fifty-five oh five Southeast Thirty-Second Court, Lacy, Washington, which is currently leased to Homes First for one dollar each through two thousand fifty-six for the purpose of affordable housing. Homes First is a five oh one C three nonprofit corporation with a mission to create and maintain safe, healthy, and affordable rental homes. The options at the end of the lease period are for the county to consider a ten-year renewal, purchase from Homes First, the value of the improvements to the property, or the first right of purchase to Homes First. At the time the county and Homes First entered the lease, fifty-five oh one was a vacant lot and fifty-five oh five had a residential home. Since two thousand six, Homes First built and has maintained a four-bedroom home on fifty-five oh one and re, and rehabbed the home at fifty-five oh five. Since the property is considered surplus and First Homes has a first right of purchase, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners move to approve a property transfer agreement with Homes First for the properties located at fifty-five oh one Southeast Thirty-Second Court and fifty-five oh five Southeast Thirty-Second Court, Lacy, Washington. Parcel numbers eight three four five zero 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 one four zero zero and eighty-three forty-five zero 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 one five zero zero for the amount of two dollars and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement. And as a note, the property transfer agreement does include a clause that if the property is no longer used for affordable housing, the property will automatically revert back to the county. Any questions?
Questions, Rick? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to approve a property transfer agreement with Homes First for the properties located at fifty-five oh one Southeast Thirty-Second Court and fifty-five oh five Southeast Thirty-Second Court, Lacy, Washington, for the amount of two dollars and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement. Second. You didn't want to read the parcel numbers?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve this property transfer agreement. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Item Seven, Public Health and Social Services, Amendment Number Eight to the Washington State Department of Health, twenty-five to twenty-seven Consolidated Contract.
Good afternoon, Dr. Jen Freihite, the Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to approve Amendment Number Eight to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract, providing an increase of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine for dollars for a revised maximum consideration of six million ninety-six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the duration of January one, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. This particular amendment adds statements of work for the Office of Drinking Water Group B Program and the recreational shellfish activities, and it amends the statement of work for the Office of Drinking Water Group A Program. And I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Dr. Freihite? There a motion?
I move to approve Amendment Number Eight to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract, CLH three two zero seven zero, providing an increase of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a revised maximum consideration of six million ninety-six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the duration of January first, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services or designate to execute the amendment.
Second.
Motion and second to approve Amendment Number Eight to the Consolidated Contract. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next item is also Public Health and Social Services, Encampment Resolution Program Contract with Department of Commerce.
Yes, we are asking for your approval to sign an inter-agency agreement between Thurston County and the Washington State Department of Commerce for the Encampment Resolution Program funding for three million eight hundred thousand. This is the county's share of the five million five hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars in funding commerce awarded to our region with the balance of funds going to the city of Olympia. The period of performance for the contract is for one year from July one, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. These funds will be used to support four ERP projects and county administrative costs.
Questions?
Clarification, is it three million or four million?
For this very particular contract, it's three point eight. That extra million is a separate agreement. The three point eight is for the county.
I'm just looking at the motion and just wanted to be sure that.
Do we have the right numbers in the motion? The first one, we were saying when we're on to four million eight hundred thousand, eight, four million eighty thousand.
Or can you clarify?
So the number that we have listed is four million eighty thousand. That should be.
If we can get more clarification on that to correct that, then.
Tom Webster?
Yeah, hi, Commissioners, Tom Webster with Thurston County Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. Sorry for the confusion on this. The, the number of the AIS unfortunately did not get updated. The correct number is three point eight million after the revision from the Department of Commerce with funding to the reallocation of funds between some of the projects.
So three point eight million on the, on the nose?
Correct.
Thank you, Dr. Freihite, for having the right number. And that helped, Commissioner Mihail flagged that. So is there, is there, the next item, it says three million nine hundred and sixty thousand. Is that accurate or is that now, so not updated?
No, that should be three million six hundred and eighty thousand. And that's based upon the very recent change.
Okay, so now we've got three hundred, three million eight hundred thousand and three million six hundred and eighty thousand.
Correct.
Everybody got that? Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Jen. So let's, was there a motion made yet? Yeah, okay. So some, can someone make a motion based on the updated information?
I move to approve the inter-agency agreement between Thurston County and the Washington State Department of Commerce for Encampment Resolution Program funding for three point eight million dollars and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Okay, motion and second to approve the inter-agency agreement for three million eight hundred thousand dollars. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes, I will give some clarification. The reason, I guess, for members of the public watching this and kind of seeing the confusion in numbers, like these contracts have been negotiated very close to, you know, today. We've been hearing back and forth with the Department of Commerce. There's been ongoing conversations with them in regards to this contract. So the reason there's a little bit of confusion of some of the numbers is because we've been getting up-to-date information up to the last minute from them. And I know this is an emergent contract and, and that's one of the reasons I think the board is supportive of passing this through.
Thank you, Commissioner Mihail. You know, just for a little bit deeper context, the Regional Housing Council, our community came forward with recommendations that we thought was the best use of the, of the dollars. And Department of Commerce made some adjustments to that. And we've, we weren't satisfied that those adjustments weren't the best interest of the community. So we reached back out, had a follow-up meeting with Department of Commerce. We really thanked them for listening to us and essentially readjusting the numbers back to where the Housing Council, our, our Housing Council had them, and at least for the next year while we, you know, think about how we're going to move forward. So it was kind of a good process all around of collaboration and discussion and prioritizing and trying to make everybody understand where everybody else was coming from on how these dollars are used.
Just a quick clarification, Commerce did not take them back to where the Regional Housing Council had them, but closer.
Closer.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well.
And Chair, if I could add to Commissioner, he has a comment. The, the back and forth that staff were doing with Commerce and watching this item closely, we're thankful for them advancing it and understand that the, the final decision that Commerce gave us, which was more in alignment with the Regional Housing Council, very appreciative of their efforts, but understand why those numbers were changing at the last minute. It's, it's to the county's advantage.
Yeah, for good reasons. So, okay.
Thank you.
All of that. Got a motion, a second, any other discussion?
I just want to, I mean, kind of echo the comments that have already been made. I appreciate the staff. I know you've worked diligently to get this up to the finish line. So I'm happy to push this forward today. And I appreciate all staff and county manager for kind of coming together with Commerce to make this happen.
And just, you know, we're speaking in the abstract, but just to put a little bit more of a, of a detail on it, you know, what the shift helps projects that are suc, that are succeeding and making sure that they stay successful versus shifting money from successful projects to less successful projects, which is kind of how we felt the Commerce shifts were, what we're doing. So that's what we're trying to do as a community is we know what's working here and we know where we need to, to put, put our investments. So this is all working out, hopefully. Okay, so with all that background, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There it is. Now, now we related the item, which is Encampment Resolution Program Contracts with Providers.
Yes, we are asking for your approval to execute contracts with Interfaith Works and the Low Income Housing Institute to fund four projects under the Encampment Resolution Program for a total value of three million six hundred and eighty thousand. The four projects are with Unity Con, Common, Sandy's Flats, Lehigh Lotus Court, and Lehigh Maple Court. And the period of performance for this contract is for one year from July one, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And these amounts reflect updated award amounts following the negotiations, as you all mentioned. Thank you. With Commerce to allow for additional funding for the Unity Commons Shelter and the city of Olympia's Quint Street Village project.
So may I ask, the, the number, we know the updated number, but you mentioned multiple projects and there's only, it says Interfaith Works and Low Income Housing is too. Is that correct? Because they're operating those four.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So we're ready for a motion, I believe.
I move to approve the contracts with Interfaith Works and Low Income Housing Institute to fund four projects under the Encampment Resolution Program for a total of three million six hundred and eighty thousand and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the agreement and the amendments that do not exceed ten percent. Second.
Motion and second to approve the contracts, Interfaith Works, the Low Income Housing Institute. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And carries.
Great, thank you much.
Thank you. Next up is Public Works. This is a proposal to set a public hearing for proposed ordinance for updates to Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen oh six, Storm and Surface Water Utility Rates. Tim Wilson will brief the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. This item is requesting the board set a public hearing for September sixteenth to hear comments related to an ordinance updating Thurston County Stormwater Code. The proposed ordinance would align the rate-setting process with other programs such as the water and sewer utilities by removing the rates from code and authorizing the board to adjust rates by resolution, providing a streamlined and efficient mechanism for periodic utility rate adjustments. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and posted to the Thurston County Stormwater Utility webpage. And with that background, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Nope, okay. Is there a motion?
I move to set a public hearing for September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at three thirty P M or soon thereafter. As a matter may be heard, to consider updates to Thurston County Code, Chapter fifteen point oh six, related to the storm, storm and surface water utility rates and authorize the clerk of the board to adjust the date and time of the hearing as needed.
Motion and second, set a public hearing for September sixteenth. Any discussion on that motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You. Next up is Human Resources, Item Nine. This is a resolution to add full-time equivalent positions in District Court. Maria Ponte, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, H R Director. I'm here on behalf of the District Court to request seventeen positions, or as we call them, full-time equivalents, F T Es. These positions are part of an inter-local agreement with the city of Olympia, where Thurston County District Court will provide court services for all city of Olympia criminal cases and infractions that require a hearing, as well as progressive alternatives and supervised probation. The cost of these positions is fully covered by the city of Olympia through that I L A. And the requested positions include one District Court Commissioner, two court support managers, one calendar coordinator, one court assistant one, three court assistant twos. And for the probation program, five adult probation counselor twos, two adult probation clerks, one mental health and veterans care coordinator. And there's a request for an administrative assistant position to provide general admin support. District Court Executive Officer Frankie Peters could not be here. If you have any questions, myself or the county manager will attempt to answer them.
Questions for Maria? Ready for motion?
I move to approve a resolution to add seventeen full-time equivalent positions at District Court to support court services provided by Thurston County District Court for the city of Olympia. Second.
Second to approve this resolution regarding District Court positions. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is community, community reports from Commissioners. And then we'll have public comment on general matters. We do have a public hearing at three thirty, but we have plenty of time to finish this meeting. So community reports, Commissioner Mihail.
Thank you. Attended inner-city transit. Attended the Legislative Steering Committee for the Washington Association of Counties interim project for transportation. So we're updating our policies in terms of our transportation requests next year. Attended the Community Advisory Committee for the Affordable Housing Council for the state. And that was their first meeting that they had a community advisory committee. So it's very exciting to, to be a part of that. I did the tours of the buildings in downtown. Thank you so much for staff for arranging that. I did a Long Lake boat tour with Eric Casino. And so thank you so much. He's a very active member of the L M D. And so he showed me around Long Lake. Attended inner-city transit. They stated an audit and they had a clean report for that. Attended a legislative subcommittee meeting with the Thurston Regional Planning Council. I did a, basically it was a field trip day with Commissioner Mensah, where we attended the chamber meeting for FIFA. We attended the Resource Hub and also attended Transit Appreciation Day. Attended the Crab's sixtieth anniversary, which is a county road administration board. And also attended the new member orientation to the Puget Sound Partnership for Ecosystem Coordination Board. Attended the Apex Community Meeting and attended the D E I V Summit Planning for next year.
I left my little printout upstairs, so I'm winging it. But I attended Yelm's National Light Out, and, which was really a, a great event. Went to the, I also attended the Resource Hub Block Party. I attended an innovative justice meeting, the TRP C Legislative Subcommittee meeting. Went on a tour, an amazing tour yesterday of Bucauda with the Bucauda mayor. Learned all kinds of things about Bucauda that I had no idea about. You know, it was interesting to see how a small town is run. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of volunteers. Met with Pack Mountain's Workforce Group and Olympia Experience and Beyond, Senator Murray's office. And, and officially, I'll just wrap it up with this, and officially became a resident of Yelm. Moved to my household and to Yelm. And so excited to say that my family will be resident of Yelm going forward. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Claus.
Thank you, Chair. So I had a number of meetings since our last business meeting. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee met. I also had a meeting with Olympia Indivisible members related to immigration enforcement and concerns in our community. I had my monthly check-in with Superior Court. I met with a group of constituents to talk about quiet zones. I met with some constituents to talk about recycling in the county. Jazzcom also met. There were two items that came up with the board afterwards about the contract with Mason County. That contract is not available yet, but as soon as it is, I'll get it to the board. And the other question was related to the increase in animal cruelty rates. And I have Jazzcom staff working on that data for me and they should have it to me by next week. So I'll have an update for you as soon as I get that information as well. Board of Health meeting, we all attended that. Orca also had a meeting. For the Orca meeting, something that came up that I'm very concerned about is the EPA considering rolling back the endangerment findings. And I will be bringing that up with the board this week to, during Commissioner Items, to discuss. Discuss the potential for writing a letter to support, uh, a letter that Orca may be writing, but we're working out the details of that, so more to come. But I just wanted to voice my concern for that potential reversal of those findings, and I believe. Unless the date changed, the EPA is having a public hearing on September fifteenth related to that matter, and written comments can be submitted all the way up until the hearing date. Um, I also attended the Resource Hub Block Party and had a really good time helping our public health staff. Circulate the Community Health Assessment Survey. For folks who don't know, um, that survey is open to the public at this time, and you can look up the Community Health Assessment and take it online. It's just a couple of questions. It should take, you know, more than five, ten minutes at most. And we'll be using that data to kind of further our discussions around public health initiatives and priorities in Thurston County. So hopefully you have a chance to fill that out. Um, and I also had a one-on-one meeting with the sheriff, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I was. Ambassing Board, uh, two meetings. We certified the election for the primary today. A couple of stats that might be of interest. The total, final turnout was twenty-nine point four-four percent. Which the Audit's Office says is actually, it sounds kind of low, but it's actually not bad. It's actually decent for an off-year primary type election. They compare those similar types of elections. Uh, Dropbox versus mail. I always like to see who's using the drop boxes in the mail. Sixty percent use the Dropbox and forty percent use mail. Um, so that was interesting. Uh, Building Code Council meeting on Friday. I went to the Crab's sixtieth anniversary, uh, with Commissioner Mejia. Lot meeting on Wednesday. Uh, I had the Chamber meeting last week, the Resource Hub Fair, Transit Appreciation Day. Um, I had a two-day meeting with the Winter Re- Recreation Advisory Committee, which I was assigned to. Uh, I guess volunteered for in a way, but, um. At the Board of Directors meeting for WAC, that, that seat was open, and. Even though we don't have any snow parks in Thurston County, apparently I was the only one that had ever owned a snow machine or did any cross-country skiing, so. I was deemed to be the appropriate candidate, so. I spent two days going over budget numbers for the Winter Recreation Advisory Committee, and that was pretty interesting. That was in, uh, Leavenworth and Winachi. What else? Uh, met with, uh, community members about heat. Uh, and how it fits into, um, our emergency planning and comprehensive planning. Innovative Justice Meeting, Commissioner Grant, Board of Health meeting, of course, and our outing with appointed directors that I caught the tail end of. So it was busy. That's it for me. So let's go to public comment related to general matters. I do have a sign-up. I'm going to start with those folks. Anyone that didn't sign up, I'll call you. Your name, or I'll call for any additional folks, but first up is Sherry Hill. Uh, and then Joni. Is on deck. Same advisements apply. I know you guys have been here, so. Appreciate your patience.
Yeah, so I'm Sherry Hill, and can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm a resident of Thurlow Lane in Tenino. And, uh, you had a matter before you a couple months ago. Uh, where you rendered a decision to uphold the, um, hearing examiner's position. Um, to deny a special use permit for Hillside Farms, which is on one hundred and forty-third. Avenue, which is right next to our, uh, location. Our neighborhood. So since that time that you rendered the decision on June twentieth. The opportunity for Paul Windler to appeal that decision to Superior Court has expired. And since that decision was issued, Hillside Farm has held twenty-nine events. There are up to forty-three events for the whole year, but just since you sent that, uh, decision through. So my neighbors and I have called, emailed, written to all of the Commissioners here. Staff and directors and community planning, compliance, prosecuting attorney's office, all with no response. And we've continued to file complaints with the compliance office because we don't know where to go. Um, and we don't know who to talk to. Um, we've not gotten any response back from anyone. Except actually Ty, your staff said that they would get back to us, but we haven't heard anything, so we don't know what. We haven't been able to find out with whom we work, where we report violations. And to find out if any enforcement action has been taken to stop the events. I mean, if you can, any of you can imagine. Having a hundred people in your backyard four nights a week, all summer. It's tough to take. I mean, the cheering and the crowd noise and the traffic. And we have a quiet rural neighborhood otherwise, except for those nights. And, um, this, at this point. Uh, becomes an enforcement issue for. An unpermitted building and venue. I mean, the building isn't even permitted yet. Because they could never succeed in, in, um, being permitted. And it's time for the county to take civil action, but we can't find out who we even work with. Since no one will return our calls, we, we don't know who to talk to. I mean, until action is taken by the county. Paul Windler and Hillside Farms will continue to hold events. And I am sure that he assumes that the county will not take action, and that's why he continues to have these events. And. I, I ask you, what action has been taken to enforce county code? Since that ruling, Title twenty-six is pretty clear. I mean, it has some good steps. And actually, many of those steps were taken in the earlier action to try to bring him into compliance. And once he applied for the special use permit at the end of twenty twenty-three. We went through the process. We've been on this for eight, nine years now.
I have to wrap up.
Huh?
Yeah, I have to ask you to wrap up.
Yeah, okay. So at this point, I'm just asking. Who do we talk with? Who do we work with? I mean, we have worked with Joshua, Joshua before. We've worked with other county staff, many who have. Long since moved on in their careers, so we, we're just asking for some help here and to find out who we work with.
Think we can follow up on that. I know I've seen your emails and we've, we'll have a discussion about follow-up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Joni Blake, I don't know if I got that name right, but Ken is on deck.
Good afternoon. I, um, did send an email to all of you, including Wayne, um, two weeks ago. And at that time, said how many events we'd had, and now it has been at least eight more. You never know if there's going to be an event or not until you hear all the noise and cheering. I reiterate everything that Sherry has said, and I can't. I can barely control my frustration about what's going on in this event center. It has never been agriculture. It has never been a barn. If so, my cows would love to live there because they would have their own private bathroom with cement floors that are easy to clean. We live on a very narrow country road. No shoulders. The county doesn't even come through and mow the grass out of the ditches. So as you go out to leave your driveway, you have to be practically on the road to be able to see left or right. Unless we mow it ourselves and we have a farm, so we do often. It is dangerous for us to pull out like that. There are cars that come over the hill, which is why he moved his driveway. There's cars that come over the hill, and the first thing they do when they cross that hill is pass who's ever in front of them. We are so lucky that there has not been a horrible accident. From people coming and going from Hillside Farms. It's been a miracle that nothing has happened. I do appreciate the fact that your administrative assistant, um, responded saying that. They would get back to us, but then again, nothing more has happened, and we've had eight or nine more events since that date. We don't know who to talk to. You call the Sheriff's Department, it's not, and you call the non-emergency line, there's nothing they can do. And it's like, well, even if you have a deputy in the area, could you have him just go by and look? Look at how many cars are parked there. Look at how they're parked in the driveway. He denies all the time that they're parked in the driveway for safety people to come through. Nobody will do that for us. And when you call, they say, well, we're not any part of the permit process. Who is part of the permit process? He's been denied. He's been denied over and over and over, and I understand that as a wedding venue. That it'd be really sad if you were the bride and last week you found out that you couldn't have your wedding this weekend. But he is known since the end of January that he was denied. He could have canceled. He could have let people know. We've had people call us because our names have been affiliated with this and say, he didn't warn us that this might shut down. Of course he hasn't warned them. He makes fifty-five hundred dollars per wedding. If he has a rehearsal attached to it, it's six thousand dollars per wedding. I've had that from the horse's mouth myself, from people that have paid the money for it. He's greedy. Who would not want to keep this business going if you could make six thousand dollars at least three nights a week? All summer long. When you're talking about forty-four events. The end of the years, the end of the wedding season is not even here. We've got the rest of August, the rest of September, and into October. He's had weddings in November and December, not as frequently, but still had them. If you're making six thousand bucks every night of the week, or four nights of the week, or three nights of the week, would you shut your business down? No.
Let's get her up up.
So who do we talk to? Who, where do we go? What do we do? That's all we want to know. Is anybody going to follow up with this and shut him down? Or was this whole. S U P permit business, was it just a joke? Okay, thank you.
Ken. Cornkey. Come on up.
My name's Ken Cornkey. I live at five-ten one hundred and forty-third Avenue Southeast, and I'm a good quarter mile away from Hillside Farms. I've been following this since two thousand and eighteen. When he applied for a permit under an agricultural clause. He didn't meet those requirements, so what does he do? He turned around and applied for a special use permit. And. I was delighted to hear and read the hearing examiner's findings. He has played the county staff, and he's apparently, it looks like, you all upheld the county. The hearings examiners, you know, findings, and I was glad to see that you did that because she had a very good report. Um, she not only talked about. Um, what he wasn't doing, she also talked about what the county staff were not doing. And it was just, um, a good report, and I was happy to see that you all upheld her report. But then again, we're right back to where he is thumbing his nose at everybody. He is just continuing to. Conduct a business in a rural area with no consequences. And like, um, Joni pointed out, he's making thousands of dollars on these events, and they're just one right after the other. So he is not going to stop until somebody puts a cease and exist order on him and starts finding him for conducting business without a permit. That will be the only way that he will stop. I'm not going to take up any more of your time.
Thanks, sir.
I'm just, I live a quarter, I've heard music at my house, and I'm a quarter of a mile away. So I can imagine these people live right next door to what they're putting up with. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to give public comment? Yes. Okay, come on up.
And then the sheet's still there.
All right.
My name is Merrill Bernstein. I live, um, on one forty-third Avenue in Tenino. I have handouts because I think it'd be better to see some of the things we've documented and sent in that we think you have never had a chance to see. May I hand them to the clerk? And then, so there's six copies that is in it.
Perfect, thank you.
And what's in those documents? Um, Sherry Hill has been the key person to keep track of. Every, pretty much every event, go out, take pictures, put the dates on the pictures, you know, you can do that on the cell phone. And then email that to all of us. So the first two pages, uh, back and front, so basically four pages, show. A list of forty events since April. But it does not, so I pressed it out and put forty-three events as of, um, August eighteenth, yesterday, or whatever day. And, um, I also want to say, you know, the frustration is just palpable. I mean, we could, if we showed up with fifty to a hundred people at every county meeting, we think, yeah, action would be taken. Um, the hearings examiner made it clear that our complaints are credible. And I mean, went through this, went through the reconsideration of his application. It came here, it went back, and it may be at the prosecutor's attorney's office at this point, but we don't know. Um, and again, we're looking for a point person. We're looking to stop just sending complaints out into the ozone and not getting anywhere because. Even if he fell, he, so he has no S U P. Um, but if he fell under the A O D, which is what he tried for before, you have to have an actual private residence on the property, and he doesn't. Um, so there's all these things we've written about, we've sent. I mean, we're just beside ourselves, but what I was going to say is, if he did fall under the A O D right now, he would only be allowed twenty-one events, single events. He's at forty-three, right? I mean, and, okay, so I just wrote my whole statement and skipped over most of it. How much time do I have?
You got a minute.
One minute. Um, yes, he makes a lot of money. Here's, here's the thing. Here's the biggest thing, I think, beside the point person, beside to know what, we're being heard. We know we're following a good process, we're not following a good process, et cetera. Here's the biggest thing. He's somebody in the know. He's a builder, he's a carpenter. And he put the wool over our eyes, saying it's a lavender farm, and I was all excited, da-da-da. Anyway. For he, he knows he's been gaming the system. Basically, first build as you wish. Then the county will, as they're mandated to, bring you into compliance. So most often than not, it's a no-lose proposition if the builder knows enough to build, to lay the groundwork. And I've seen this before because I built my own place. That was my own general contractor. So that's a huge thing, and that's what he's been doing and stringing, and, and as he makes the money now, he's paying his lawyers, he's probably. You know, gearing up, and he's not going to let go. It's a good, good income source. And I think that's, uh, getting to the queue. Okay, I'm all like, all over the place. Um. The other thing is. It may not be kosher to say, and, and we may be written off for suspecting it, but we've wondered if he just has a good friend. Behind the scenes, and, and even if he didn't, what I just said holds true. He knows enough of the groundwork to then go to the county and say, well, uh, you should help me come into compliance. But at this point, he's way beyond what, um, is allowed. And I think I'm just kind of go all over the place, so thank you.
We have you. Thank you for the written material. Okay, uh, anyone else wants to give testimony? Yes.
Hi, Commissioners. Um, I'm Paula Lowe. I'm President of the Patterson Lake Association. The Quiet Zone Team that you have been meeting with for the past three years is a committee of our association. And as leader of the organization, I received the reports and presentations that the team has presented to the county. The Quiet Zone area that we're addressing is the main north-south railroad tracks that cross our lake at Atchison Road, so I have a graphic for you. So this is the one-mile radius around the lake where the, you can hear the train horns. And it includes, um, quite a few upland properties that are not in our lake management district. They're other, other neighbors. And we're in communication with them at this time. When, while the Atchison Railroad crossing is near the lake, the train horns are heard within a one-mile radius of that crossing. Homeowners in this radius, radius represent a wide socio-economic segment of our society. We've researched that. Within that radius, there are thirty-seven hundred parcels. It's estimated that eight thousand people live in those parcels. I'll give you a few facts about this crossing and the train horns. Atchison Road, if you've ever been there, is a rural road where less than a hundred twenty cars pass per day. There are forty-four trains in a twenty-four-hour period. Those forty-four trains blow their horns loudly a hundred and fifty times in twenty-four hours. We've tested the decibel readings of train horns in some of our neighborhoods, and it ranges from seventy to eighty decibels. Remember, that's a hundred and fifty horns a day. Keep in mind, the county noise ordinance. Keep in mind, the county noise ordinance is fifty-five decibels during the day and forty-five decibels at night. So train horns, and they are allowed to blow up to a hundred and ten decibels, are quite a bit louder than county ordinance allows. If the commissioners want to experience the loudness of the train horns, we'll take you on a boat ride around the lake to hear it. I know a couple of you, Emily and Carolyn, have been on our lake on the boat, and you can hear how loud it is over the water, and it echoes beyond that. So if you want to have a conversation indoors or outdoors, we have to stop talking. So you can't even talk to your spouse across the room. You actually have to stop talking because it's so loud, and I'm pretty far from the tracks. But again, it is further than the lake. It is within a one-mile radius of the lake. All those people can hear the train. After three years of research and talking with the county, we'd like it to move forward. We want the county staff and commissioners to conduct the diagnostic review of Atchinson Road Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not had an opportunity to provide public comment? You know, I'm looking, that goes for anyone online. I think that's all staff, folks. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, next up is adjournment. So we have a public, if you're here for a speed limit, we'll be taking that up at three-thirty. So we have about eighteen minutes, and then we'll be back to do, to do a public hearing on the proposed speed limit changes. Otherwise, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Turn over with the recording. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing for this August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, it's three-thirty PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Commissioner Fornier is excused today. Commissioner Mahia to my right, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioner Emily Claus to my left. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Joshua Cummings. A note upfront, this public hearing is not being livestreamed due to technical issues. It is being recorded on Zoom. Zoom recorded will be, recording will be posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within twenty-four hours of the meeting. The topic today is a public hearing to consider revising the speed limit schedule for various county roads. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed speed limit revisions for the following eight roads. Number one, Albany Street Southwest from US twelve to Little Rock Road Southwest. It's an unposted fifty proposed to go to thirty. Number two, Little Rock Road Southwest from Albany Street Southwest to six hundred and fifty feet northeast of one-hundred-and-eightieth Way Southwest. Again, unposted fifty down to thirty potentially. Number three, Little Rock Road Southwest from one-hundred-and-thirty-third Avenue Southwest to one-hundred-and-twenty-eighth Avenue Southwest. Same, unposted fifty to thirty. Number four, Case Extension Road Southwest from one-hundred-and-thirteenth Avenue Southwest to its dead end. A posted forty down to a posted twenty-five is proposed. Number five, Pleasant Glade Road Northeast from Abernathy Road Northeast to the Lacey City Limits. An unposted fifty down to twenty-five. Number six, Sleder Kenny Road Northeast from South Bay Road Northeast to Fifty-Sixth Avenue Northeast. A posted fifty proposed forty. Number seven, Fifty-Sixth Avenue Northeast from Schinkie Road Northeast to Sleder Kenny Road Northeast. Posted fifty to forty. Wilkinson Road Northeast from the Yelm City Limits to Ordway Drive Southeast. Unposted fifty to a proposed thirty-five. Okay, minor grammatical and formatting edits, reference point corrections, and name updates have also been proposed to the speed limit schedule. It's part of this optioning. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person by Zoom, emailed, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online. Select B O C C Meetings, Hearings, and Work Session Agendas. Then Meetings and Agendas. The Zoom link to join the public hearing remotely has been posted there. This public hearing is not being livestreamed due to technical issues, but it's being recorded on Zoom. So procedurally, Becky Khan, Traffic Engineer and Operations Manager, will provide information on the topic. Assuming those on, will get the folks who signed up. Those on Zoom will be read, your name will be let, read aloud. You do not need to sign up in any particular way. You'll have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and area of town in which you reside. Public hearing is now open. Becky will present background information of the proposed speed limit revisions, summarize any written comments submitted, and provide any additional information requested by the board.
I'll wait for my presentation to come up. Good afternoon, I'm Becky Khan. I'm the Traffic Engineering and Operations Manager with Thurston County Public Works, and I'm here to talk about the eight different county roads that we are considering revising the speed limit. So I'm going to walk through first the national, state, and county standards that we adhere to when setting speed limits. Going to go through the speed limit revision process that we follow here in Thurston County. I'm going to briefly go through each of the eight proposed speed limit revisions that we're talking about today, and then I'm going to go through the next steps. So at the national, federal level, we follow the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the MUTCD, which sets the guidelines that we follow when setting speed limits on all public roadways in the United States. At the state level, we follow RCW forty-six-point-six-point-six-one-point-four-one-five, which states that local agencies can set their local speed limits between twenty miles per hour and sixty miles per hour on their local roadways. At the county level, we have county, Thurston County Code twelve-point-one-zero-five, which states that all unincorporated roads within Thurston County shall be fifty miles per hour unless stated otherwise in the Thurston County Speed Limit Schedule. We also follow Thurston County Resolution number one-six-one-four-two, which outlines the process that we use and guides our engineering study. And then it also sets out some technical guidelines that we follow when setting speed limits. We look at the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is the speed that eighty-five out of a hundred people are traveling at or below on that given roadway. And we generally try to stay within ten miles per hour of that speed. We also look at the ten mile-per-hour pace speed, which is kind of the ten mile-per-hour range that the majority of people traveling on that road fall within. And we also, this resolution allows for engineering judgment if we do feel we need to go outside of those ranges that I just talked about. All of these guidelines do adhere to the MUTCD that I mentioned earlier at the federal level. So in Thurston County, the speed limit process that we follow generally starts with a, we receive a request. It might come through the commissioner's office, or it comes through our Public Works Service Request Program. Those come in, it could also come in from the sheriff's department. We do get some from them. It could come internal from Public Works, a new project that's going in, new developments are coming in in the area. Or maybe the surface condition of the roadway changes and necessitates a change. So once we receive that request, it generally triggers us to do an engineering study, which I, that resolution I talked about before sets those guidelines. We go out and we set a tube counter on the roadway, and this collects data on the traffic that's traveling on the road. It, it looks at how many vehicles are on the roadway, what speed those vehicles are traveling at, and then also it can tell us what classification of vehicle. So if it's passenger cars, trucks, buses, and then axle count of larger trucks going up. We also will do a pull a collision request to look at collisions that have been occurring on that roadway. Look if there's any trends. We also look at roadway characteristics, talking about the geometrics. If there's curves or hills, if there's the presence of shoulder, no shoulder, the side slopes on the road. If there's objects within the right-of-way, we look at pedestrian use. If there's multimodal bikes or people walking on that roadway. And/or like a presence of schools or other things that might necessitate a reason for a change. So we use all this to determine whether or not we are going to recommend a change, a revision. Yes.
Thank you. Can I want to go back to step one, the receive a request? When those requests are received, are they from staff members who are driving around? Are they from constituents? Who is making these requests?
So the majority come from the public, sometimes through the commissioner's office, and sometimes just through our service request, online, over the phone. That's how the majority of them come in. We do have the, we do occasionally get someone. Today is from the sheriff's office, let us know of a concern they had, and we looked into it. Or we have had some in the past because of like a design project that's gone through. Good? Okay. Um, so once we've determined, once we've gathered all that information, we decide if we can have the justification to recommend a speed limit change. Most of the requests that we receive stop at this point because we're not able to justify a change in the speed limit based on the data. At this point, we usually work with the constituent or whoever it is, generally on some kind of traffic calming measure that we can offer them. But the few that do make it on go onto a list that we compile, and we approach the board through this process about once a year. So we gather them all up. And when it gets closer to time to do that, we do conduct some informal public outreach. We send a mailer to all the constituents that live along that roadway and ask for their feedback because they're the ones that use the roadway every day. And I do have that compiled with the, with the public comment that I'm going to go through today. So once we've determined what our list looks like, we propose the new speed limit list, and we go through this process that we're here today, the public hearing process. So with that, I'm going to start to go through the eight that we have here today. I want to start by saying that each year, we, it's actually been two years since the last time we came forward with this, some speed limits, which is why there's eight, which is quite a few. But we've also looked through the speed limit schedule, and we've been trying to clean it up and make sure that it's all correct and accurate, and there, it's, looks good from a document sense. And we did find several that what is posted out in the field is inconsistent with, with, with what is on the speed limit schedule. And so the first three here today fall into that category. So the first one is Albany Street Southwest. This is in Rochester, down in Southwest County. This extends from US twelve to Little Rock Road Southwest. We are requesting it go from an unposted fifty to a thirty miles per hour. And so this one is currently posted at thirty miles per hour out in the field, but it's not listed at all in our speed limit schedule. So we're looking to bring those into alignment. So we did the study like we would normally do. You can see roughly twenty-three-hundred vehicles use it a day. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is thirty-four, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed is twenty-four to thirty-four. So it does justify that thirty mile per hour that we are requesting.
You're saying that there's no, that's already what's posted?
Yes.
So no one's going to see any change of any kind? It's just, it's just like an error in the book?
It's an error in the, in the paperwork.
Okay, well, that makes it easier, I think.
Yeah.
That's the top first three, you said?
Yeah, the first three are under that category. So next, I'm going to go to Little Rock, which you'll see is just an extension of Albany. So this one, it also must have got posted at the same time, basically. So this goes from Albany Street Southwest to just northeast of one-hundred-and-eightieth, Eightieth Way Southwest, going from an unposted fifty to a thirty miles per hour. Very similar data also supports the change. Heading north, we continue on Little Rock up to just south of Little Rock Elementary. So this one goes from one-hundred-and-thirtieth Avenue Southwest to one-hundred-and-twenty-eighth Avenue Southwest. Again, this is currently posted in the field as a thirty, but it is not listed in our speed limit schedule. So we're just trying to bring those in alignment. You can see roughly thirty-seven hundred vehicles use it per day. The eightieth percentile speed is thirty-seven, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed is twenty-nine to thirty-nine. So again, it is supported by the data to make that change in the schedule. Next, we're going up to Case Extension Road. This comes off one-hundred-and-thirteenth Avenue Southwest and goes down to the dead end. This is a short residential road. We're trying to bring it into alignment with its current use, going from forty to a twenty-five. Roughly seventy-six vehicles use it per day. The eighty-fifth was thirty-one, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed was eighteen to twenty-eight miles per hour. So it is supported by just the rough data.
I'm sorry, I know, I understand percentile speed. One more time, the ten miles-per-hour pace speed?
Yeah, this is a harder one. It's, it's like the ten mile-per-hour range. So from eighteen to twenty-eight, that the majority of the people traveling are like falling in that range.
Okay, so it's kind of like where, like if you had a graph, I'd be where there's a clump.
Yes, if you think of like a, a bell shape, it would be like the top where the majority are. Okay, so then we're moving up north towards Northwest Lacey. This is Pleasant Glade Road Northeast. This goes from Abernathy Road to the Lacey City Limits. Lacey actually just recently annexed the end of Pleasant Glade Road Northeast. We were going to do the whole thing, but now it's just a section. This will go from an unposted fifty to a twenty-five. This is a narrow residential road, and it's being used that way by pedestrians. You have the school just to the south off of Abernathy. It currently sees one-hundred-and-thirty-nine vehicles per day. The eighty-fifth is thirty-three miles per hour, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed is twenty-three to thirty-three miles per hour.
And then when you cross into Lacey, what is their speed?
So that they are twenty-five on all roadways unless posted otherwise. So it will be consistent throughout its length, yeah. The next one is again continuing up north, Sleder Kenny Road Northeast. This extends from South Bay Road Northeast to the end where it turns into Fifty-Sixth Avenue Northeast. We're looking to go from a posted fifty miles per hour to a forty miles per hour. This sees roughly seventeen hundred vehicles per day. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is fifty-three miles per hour, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed is forty-one to fifty-one miles per hour. This road is pretty narrow, it has no shoulders, and it has very steep side slopes through a good portion of it. There are a number of driveways along its length, and there is some like bicycle use on the roadway, which is why we're trying to go to the lower end of the ten mile-per-hour pace speed and recommending the forty. Additionally, the section of Sleder Kenny that is south of South Bay Road is also posted at forty, so it kind of brings it into alignment with that stretch. And as Sleder Kenny goes up, it turns into Fifty-Sixth. So as a driver, you wouldn't even realize you're changing roads unless you know the names of the roads. So we're also including Fifty-Sixth in this revision, similarly to go from a posted fifty to a forty. There, it sees about a thousand vehicles per day. The eighty-fifth was forty-nine, and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed was thirty-seven to forty-seven miles per hour. The final road is Wilkinson Road Southeast. It extends from the Yelm City Limits to Ordway, Ordway Drive Southeast. This is just in north, north of Yelm. This is the one that was actually brought forward by the sheriff's department. Within the Yelm City Limits, Wilkinson is a posted thirty-five miles per hour. And then we have Ordway at thirty-five miles per hour. So it leaves this odd gap that doesn't have any speed limit set. So we're looking to make it thirty-five to have a consistent for the drivers along that roadway. We did this study, and as you can see, with the eighty-fifth at forty-one and the ten mile-per-hour pace speed, twenty-eight to thirty-eight, it does support that change. And I realized I was going to go through the public comment on each one, but I forgot to. So I'm going to give you a summary of the public comment now. We did not receive any comment on Albany or the first stretch of Little Rock. We did receive two positive comments on the second stretch of Little Rock, which is up towards Little Rock Elementary. We received two positive comments on Case Extension Road. On Pleasant Glade, which is that one that has a section next to the Lacey City Limits, we had six positive comments and one negative comment. On Sleder Kenny, we had seven positive comments and three negative. On Fifty-Sixth Avenue, we had no comments. And on Wilkinson Road Southeast, we had one positive and one neutral. They just didn't have an opinion either way. So we are also, like I said earlier, we're going through, trying to make sure our document is consistent throughout. Also, since the last time we came forward, there have been some annexations by Lacey, and I think there was one in Yelm. So we went through, and some roads just got removed altogether, or some their limits changed. So just kind of some administrative changes, also some grammatical errors that we took care of in that. And with that, just next steps. After this public hearing is closed, we will look, ask the board whether they would like to approve the ordinance to revise the speed limit schedule. After that, we would go install the signage and work with the sheriff's office to bring notice to the new speed limits. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Then we will move forward to public comment. So, in person, I didn't have anyone signed up, but you have opportunity. Raise your hand if you want to provide public comment. I have the wrong sign up sheet then. Can somebody go? Never mind. Perfect, okay. So Joan Marshall. Greg Walker on deck.
My name's Joan Marshall. I've lived on Sleater Kenny for forty years. It is a narrow road with a steep slope to the west. And almost no shoulder. It is arterial for properties north of us. Three or four miles out. And so it's a, it's a major road for Thurston County for servicing properties beyond that. The traffic tends to exceed the posted speed. Passing, unsafe passing is a regular occurrence. I always have to slow down significantly to be able to just pull into my driveway, just to make sure someone isn't trying to pass as I'm trying to enter my driveway. The population in the county has increased significantly over this period of time. We have a lot of new families, young families. We have a lot of wildlife and, and a lot of very large trees. And so we have issues with icing during the winter, which is also problematic because it's hard for that area to get serviced because it is further out. We are not far from the school and there's a lot of buses and people pass buses unsafely as well. And as was stated, the speed limit on Sleater Kenny by the school, it actually is forty unless children are present. But the stop sign at Sleater Kenny and South Bay Road, in nineteen ninety-five, there was not a four-way stop. And we were losing three residents a year at that, that location. So that's over ninety lives that have been saved over the last thirty years because a four-way stop was put in by the county and a revision of that intersection, changing the slope and slowing down the traffic that would hit the top of the hill. And I think just people just increased their speed like it was a race because they wanted to get through. And kudos to the county for the new roundabout at Johnson Point and Hawksbury Road, which is saving again lots of lives of, of young, we've lost a lot of young people out that way. And I just encourage the county to seriously consider that forty mile an hour speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Walker.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Greg Walker and I live at fifty-seven hundred sixty-seventh Avenue Northeast, which is off Johnson Point Road. But I often drive this portion of Sleater Kenny. My wife and I go out there for drives. We'll drive it probably at forty miles an hour. Just to view wildlife, view the flowers and things that are going on our way up to Shinkie and back to the coffee stop. You know, and, but I also, I'm a retired traffic engineering professional and I know the fact that just reducing a speed limit sign won't slow the traffic down. This, this is a rural road. People are on a destination, some of them are going to their houses, slowing down, but it's still a low volume road. And so people tend to travel at fifty plus. So I don't think just reducing it down to forty is going to do much good because they're still going to travel it that way. The police aren't there, there's no devices, there's no bumps, there's no anything to really slow them down. So it, it's kind of a waste of time to do that. You're just creating more lawbreakers is what you're doing. You know, we like to drive it at that slow speed, but you know, I'll see cars coming behind us and we'll pull over to a driveway and let them go by. Because otherwise, it'll be the same thing as the south part of Sleater Kenny that's done to forty miles an hour now. If you try to go forty miles an hour there, you'll be in a car right on your bumper. They'll pass you, they'll yell at you, they'll honk at you. There's more road rage out there now than there was. I've lived out there for forty-five years and it's just, that's ridiculous speed limit also. So I guess I, if you were going to reduce it, if you went to forty-five, at least it'd be closer to, you know, what people travel it. They might slow down a little bit for that. Chances are you're not going to get much compliance. So I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Victoria Greenwood. Okay, Jennifer Thompson.
Hi, I'm Jen Thompson and I actually live on Sleater Kenny at fifty-four eighteen. I'm going to tell you that you haven't lived until you've gone to get your mail at your mailbox and someone is driving sixty miles an hour on Sleater Kenny. There are trucks, huge semis that roll up and down that lane, that road, like you wouldn't believe. There are dogs, there are deer, there are school buses. School buses go up and down Sleater Kenny because of the school and down at the bottom. There are bicycles, there is absolutely no way to walk on Sleater Kenny whatsoever. So there's no, nothing, there's no way to pull over. I cannot tell you how many times I've pulled into my driveway and been honked at because someone is driving fifty miles an hour behind me. And I turned on my signal long before, so they know what I'm doing. Until you've lived on a road that is literally ten miles an hour less than the freeway, you haven't lived. So I would encourage you to please reduce that to forty miles an hour. It may or may not stop anyone from doing what they're going to do anyway. But it would make me feel better as a resident to know that the speed limit is at least the same as what it came up with as you're coming up Sleater, Sleater Kenny from the freeway and ending up there at Fifty-S sixth. Just a side note, hilariously, there is a deer sign on Fifty-S sixth. So you're supposed to watch for deer at fifty miles an hour, which I don't quite know how you're going to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Merriman.
Is there a way to use your slides up there? Can we get back to it for visualization? Let's look for the Little Rock one.
Sure.
Show them. Number three down the line of, yeah, right there. Hi, my name's Jeff Merriman. I've been conversing with Sam Bloom there at Public Works because. Oh, there we go.
There, right?
Yep, that's it. So up there at the top is Little Rock. To the right is a twenty-five mile an hour zone. To the left is a twenty-five, a forty, and then thirty-five, the fork in the road that goes Waddle Creek up to Capital Forest. I've been after them to change that forty to thirty-five for quite some time. They keep telling me the speed study says eighty-five percent of the people do forty-three on that road, therefore they won't change it. When we look at the other data here, like Albany, for years, we had the thirty or thirty-five mile an hour sign posted down there before the speed study was even done. And humans are creatures of habit. So when they found out they couldn't have the sign up, they took the sign down, they did a speed study. Oh, guess what, eighty-five percent of the people drive within that range and everything. It just goes to show their data is manipulated and it's quite concerning. So I ask you guys as county commissioners to basically look at your county staff and the data that they're using and really go over with a fine-tooth comb because I have emails with Sam Bloom about this forty mile an hour zone going to thirty-five because we have all the ATVs and UTVs up in Capital Forest and they pay for a state tab on their machines to come down into town. If that was a thirty-five mile an hour road, we would have more business in Little Rock. Therefore, we'd have tax dollars coming in, we'd have more money coming into our local businesses if it was a thirty-five mile an hours road. And on top of it, the Washington State ATV Fund that has over a million dollars in that account is slated at the end of the year to go to a different state agency because the county has not accessed it in five years. So we have money sitting there to turn it to a thirty-five mile an hour zone, which is only five miles an hour difference. And I ask and urge you guys to please put pressure on your Public Works Department to change that forty down to a thirty-five. So it's consistent with the speed limits on either end of that three hundred yard section of road. That's all.
Okay, anyone else here to give public comment? Come on up. It's okay. Not a problem. Just tell us who you are and kind of where you reside and then you go out for minutes.
Okay. There will be tears. My name is Barb Lemke and I live on Little Rock Road. And I sent this letter to Mr. Forner, to Sam Bloom with pictures of what's. How the issue of the speed limit on Little Rock Road has negatively impacted me, my family and the community on this road. I would like to just share a few stories since we've moved there. The first story is the same year that we moved into this house on Little Rock. We weren't at home at the time and we received notification about movement on our doorbell camera. We witnessed a little boy wearing what appeared to be pajamas crawl onto our front porch from our front yard. He then attempted to open our front door, then walked out of the camera's view and into the view of our driveway camera. This little boy was about three years old, wearing onesie pajamas. We saw him sprawl out onto our daughter's car before disappearing. Being new to the neighborhood, we had not met any of our neighbors and we had no idea who this little boy was or where he came from. After getting home, we went door to door, showing all the neighbors the footage and nobody had seen this little boy before. So we just lovingly called him Pajama Boy. A couple of years later, we heard a commotion out in front of our house and we went to investigate and saw some people who had stopped to contain two dogs on Williams Road. And the little boy, there was a boy standing in the middle of the street. He was about six years old. This little boy seemed very scared and confused and he was standing in the middle of the road and the cars were just flying by, they weren't even slowing down. There was a man stopped on Allison, which is our cross street, and then Williams is our other cross street. And the man yelled at me, he said, are those your dogs? I said, no, is that your kid? And he said, no, I've never seen that kid before. Again, he's standing in the middle of the road and the cars are not stopping. I went out to the road and I looked at him and as soon as I went to grab him, I recognized it was this. It was this same little boy from three years prior. And cars were just yelling, get that kid out of the road. And when I leaned down to move him, he went like that. And so I knew that he was, I'd worked with autistic kids before. And I just turned and I just motion, I just kind of moved him off to the side of the road. And I said, do you live there? And he said, yeah. And I said, do you live there? And he said, yeah. And I pointed at our house and I said, do you live there? And he said, yeah. Just then his dad came running up. His dad came running up the driveway and this little boy had escaped from Autism Acres, which is just, it's on Little Rock Road, but it's just off the driveway there. If we hadn't been home. That day would have ended very differently. In another incident, there was a car accident right outside of our home. We heard a large crash that shook our house. We called nine-one-one and went out there and a sixteen-year-old boy had just crashed in front, into the tree in front of our house. Miraculously, he climbed out of the smashed car and was uninjured. If those trees were not there, that young man would have driven through our chain link fence and hit our home. The next story happened very recently.
That's, ma'am, I have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. So the, the speed limit sign, when I had sent this to Sam Bloom, the speed limit sign, the motor, the automated sign had been put out in front of our house. And so when I went out there and I was taking a picture of it and at the time I was taking the picture, the school bus had pulled into Williams and it had its stop sign out and the lights were going and the truck, three cars back, blew past this school bus and the children were getting off. And had they not been going down Williams and crossed Little Rock, they would have been hit. There have been seven fatality accidents on Little Rock Road since November. I can name the names. People are afraid, there's seniors, there's children, there's businesses. People are afraid to go out their driveway because people do not do fifty, they do ninety. The cars go by so fast that you can't even see what kind of car that it was. So if you change the speed limit, I mean, it's fifty now, nobody does fifty. So if you made it forty-five and then just enforced it. Yeah, I have another page, but it desperately needs to be changed.
Yeah, and you did send in written comment, is that correct?
Yes, I, I sent the whole letter with all the pictures.
Yeah, that. I looked at that today, thank you. Okay, anyone else who didn't get a chance? Yes. Madam Clark? Four for this? Four minutes? I announced the four, so we'll just go with that. That's what I've been using on my phone, but be great if you could set it up there. Okay.
My name is Danielle Baring. We recently moved into four-eight-one-six Pleasant Glade Road, which if you note on the map, south of us is going to be, it's a dog park right now. It's going to be part of the bigger Lacey Community Park. On our property, again, we're very blessed to be on it. The driveway is right by that turn and I'm letting you know that people are going fifty miles per hour on that road where there is no sidewalk. So as we're walking our dog, as our kids are trying to play with the kids next door and they have to cross that road, people are not slowing down, even when they see kids and we try to wave them down just to get their attention. They're purposely going as fast as they can to get to their destination. So I also urge the council to consider, and all submit comments as well, we just moved in, to put in speed bumps to enforce that because just judging by one negative comment coming through this very residential road, people are going to go, as other people have commented, wherever they can go to get to their destination if they know they're not going to be stopped. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Craig Smith. I drive the Shinkie Road every day to work, I've done it for twenty years. We're listening to everybody and coming here thinking about this. I was trying to figure out what has significantly changed about that road to, to warrant a reduction in speed limit. I listened to your analysis and it didn't seem to fit to reduce it. It was, uh, almost fitting to reduce it. I, I, the deer have been the same amount for twenty years, they had, that hasn't changed. The slopes haven't changed. The thing that I have seen that's changed is cars have gotten safer. I do know that people get in their spaceships now and they feel like they can go fast because it doesn't seem like they're going fast. We can't change road rage with a speed limit reduction and I know that that has changed because I cannot stand it either. So I'm trying to figure out what, what the real reasoning for it is if nothing has significantly changed about that, that section of road. That's it.
Anyone else?
My name is Victoria Greenwood and I've been out there almost thirty years. I live in the.
I live in the house that my best friend resided in before he passed away on Slater Kenny, right at that corner going into fifty-six. Again, I've been there for thirty years, I support what you've said, I don't really understand why we're taking a look at this right now, other than there has been a significant influx of traffic from predominantly the Boston Harbor area and they're using this road to zip on through and probably get to the freeway access. Again, the slopes haven't changed. The shoulder, I'm a little concerned about, some of our houses are close to that road, creating right of ways or extra sidewalk areas or even inviting bicycles out there to travel that road when we do have a lot of transport trucks going through. I'm not sure if we put down to forty miles an hour, if that continues making this more of a developed area, which will impact some others, or if we keep it fifty and be cautious, I'm not sure where we stand on it. I do know that if we do change it down, we're going to have to do some more improvements around the sides of it, it's going to invite more people out in that area. I humbly suggest that we have more of a Thurston County Sheriff presence out there to stop some of the, let's say, repeat offenders. That's my two cents, thank you.
Other public comment? Nobody, anyone online? Those are all staff? Raise your hand or turn on your camera if you are online and want to provide public comment. I can't read the name. Somebody help me? Christian, you got four minutes, Christian?
Soon as I figure out how to unmute, I will go. Thank you, council members. My name is Christian McLaughlin and I live one-one-three-one-five Case Extension Road, Southwest. When I bought this house, the case extension, which is a point-seven mile road, I might add, the, the speed limit was unposted and when the city came out originally and posted the speed limit reduction to forty miles an hour, I was baffled that the speed limit was that high. On this road, I own probably a quarter of it on the right-hand side heading south. I have a daughter with special needs, across the street, there is a boy with special needs, as well as down the road, there's another little boy with special needs. People fly down this road and where it was, I wasn't posted before, we could yell at them and get them to slow down a lot of times. But once it got posted to forty, it, it, it completely changed the game, which ultimately resulted in my, my daughter's dog getting hit one night and flopping around for about thirty minutes before my daughter's dog realized that it was dead. I would like to propose, or I would like you to please take that all into consideration when looking over the speed limits, I think where one side of this road butts up to I-five and the other side of this road butts up to a community, we should follow the same guidelines as a community and this road should be twenty-five miles per hour. And that is what I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for online. So. Great. Questions for Becky or any board discussion before we would close the public hearing? I have a question for Becky. So. And again, it's like to put you on the spot. This isn't a good question, but some folks asked about speed bumps and like, you know, saying like, well, you know, you could post a sign, but that won't necessarily slow people down, so do we have a process or how, how is it decided like where speed bumps get put or something like that, something more of a physical thing? I know we have a process for that, folks might like to hear what that is.
Yeah, so we have a traffic calming program out of Public Works. It's, we primarily for physical implementations like speed bumps or other devices, it is on a twenty-five mile per hour or less road, residential road, just due to the safety of a speed bump when you're traveling at a higher speed. But yeah, if anyone is interested in the program, they're welcome to contact Public Works Traffic Department, you can contact me, Becky Khan, and I can get you in touch with the whole process that we put in place. It starts with a speed study similar to what I talked about, looking at the speeds. And then we have a prioritization process to get those funded and through. Or if a community wants to fund them themselves, we also have a process for that.
Right, because there's marmoni involved and just putting up sign. I helped community members in front of Griffin School I was mentioning and they went through the process and were able to make it to the top and get their speed bumps put in in front of the school, so that was something that is another avenue.
It's a fortunate program that we have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, let's do it after, this is not really the, the right process. I mean, I, I like to get things done, we don't have a big crowd, but if you can just hold on for that, that'd be great. Anything else before we close public hearing? I do have another one, sorry. A couple of folks mentioned the Slater Kenny, I mean, there was a lot of comment about Slater Kenny and like what the impetus was. Could we put the slide back up and look at the, like, the data that you had there? Like how it matched what your, the criteria you described, just so I'm, I remember, I didn't write all the numbers down.
It's like two or three down from.
Yeah, just a couple more down.
One more, yeah, there you are.
Yeah, so can you just go over this one again?
So we looked at Slater Kenny, again, between South Bay and fifty-sixth where it curves into it. We went out there and did the study. And you can see the eighty-fifth percentile is fifty-three and the ten mile per hour pace speed is forty-one to fifty-one. So again, we generally don't go below the ten, the lower limit of the ten mile per hour pace speed. So in this case, we were using engineering judgment to go down to the forty based on the conditions of the roadway characteristics out there. So there's no shoulder, it's a narrower road, the steeper side slopes, and agreed that hasn't changed. But I think some people said that the traffic has increased out there, causing people to go faster. There's also a number of driveways along the length of the roadway, which also fed into that and there are bikers that use that road as well.
And did you say something about the, like, the speed limits on either side? I can't remember what you said.
Yeah, so, well, the, the speed limit to the south of South Bay Road is also forty, so it continues a continuous speed limit throughout, which we do look to do when we can. And then fifty-six is on the list as well, on our list today. It would be changing to forty as well to keep it consistent along the length.
Okay, so there were some factors to push it one mile an hour under the typical range. And but right now it's fifty.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries, public hearing's closed, and now we have next steps, we can adopt, we can have a follow-up. Take some more time with public comment, it's really up to the board how we want to proceed. Do you need recommendation, county manager? Or Public Works team? Is there a time, are there time limits that we have to, you know, to manage?
Madam Smith, county engineer, so the action item, we went ahead and requested that you take action, but we certainly don't have to take action today, we can come back. If you're, want additional information, we can come back and provide that information. Typically, it would be at an agenda setting meeting. So.
Okay. Well, what does it tell you of the board?
I can ready to move forward. Can we take action today?
Make a motion.
Move to the ordinance amending Thurston County's speed limit schedule, second.
Motion is second to adopt the proposed eight items in the speed limit schedule, as well as the cleanup items that you described, any discussion on that motion? Also, let me see if I can say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Done, thank you, everybody.